All right, so we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Attendance will be recorded. Section two, his policies reviews on review cycle. Dr. Russell?
Thank you, Ms. White. So we are coming back to our review cycle. If you recall, we've taken a break from the review cycle because we were way ahead of ourselves. But we zeroed in on three policies to review briefly this evening. The first is the assignment within the district. So that's policy 206. So I'm going to pull that up. And just give you a sense of what this policy talks about. And this is really focused on the assignment for students within the district. They attend their school of residence. And this particular policy language focuses on twins and that parents of twins have an opportunity to have a voice in their placement. And that is respected by our administrative team. And if for some reason they don't agree, then they talk through that and they work together collaboratively to come up with the best placement for the students. So that's policy 206. There are no recommended revisions to the policy. If it's okay, we'll shift to policy 702, gifts, grants, donations, awards, and scholarships. And this policy really has just a few recommended discussion points. There are no recommended revisions being proposed this evening. I'll ask the group if they believe that the last two bullet points are necessary. It is 702. And we can invite individuals around the table to weigh in, but really I'm focusing on under delegation of responsibility. The superintendent or designee shall. Number four, publicly report to the board all gifts to the district accepted on behalf of the board which have a value of a thousand or more. Five, acknowledge the receipt and value of any gift accepted by the school district. We present to the board all grants, donations, gifts that are received. We request your approval for those that alter the real estate will lead to ongoing costs. There are certain criteria that need that are met and require board action. Regardless, we report all grants and donations to the board. So didn't know if we felt like these two statements overlapped. Or they both should continue to exist. That's the only discussion point we'll bring forward.
Anyone have an opinion or a comment regarding that?
My thought would be to keep them. I think there is a distinction between the acknowledgement of a gift. And a public reporting of a gift of that with a value of a thousand dollars. It's a subtle difference. We do it now as a best practice, but I don't see any reason why we shouldn't have it formalized as a part of the policy. Just my thought.
Hopeful. Thank you.
Do you have anything to add? Okay. All right. So then I guess we would leave it as is and then it's qualified that way?
Yep. And actually, the superintendent or designee is expected to acknowledge the receipt and value of any gift accepted by the school district. Know that we also report any gift accepted, a thousand dollars or less, a thousand dollars or more to the board as well. That's just been our practice. Okay. Moving on, then the last one. There are no recommended revisions to the Title One Parent and Family Engagement Policy 918. This has been reviewed by administration. And this policy guides how we must interact in response to receiving Division of Federal Program funding under Title One. And how we need to work as partners with parents. So that school family engagement is something that the Division of Federal Programs really emphasizes in our Title One schools. Focus on that. No recommended revisions except for a minor grammatical one.
I think then we're good to move on to section three.
Okay. So section three brings us to another PNN. So they've sort of been coming in bunches. We had one in May, in June, in July, and then September. And again, this PNN is really to a great extent outside of 103, 103-1, 103-2, and 104. We'll come back to 234 from last month. But to a great extent, in the second half of that, the September PNN policies, 113 dot one down through 805 dot two. They're really revisions based on updated terminology, very similar to last to last month's PNN that we reviewed. And you can see in the notes that there are some some language updates. But let's go back up to the ones that may invite a little bit more conversation. And we've spent some time working with our solicitor. And Mr. Moran has worked very closely with Fox Rothschild on policies 103, 103-1, 103-2, and 104. Because of the court case that currently exists. And some schools in our district obligated to follow the Title IX regulations from 2020. And other schools obligated to follow those of 2024. So, Mr. Moran, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Russell. So the first policy you're going to review is 103. And this is the policy, again, governing discrimination, harassing, affecting students. The main reason for the revisions to policy 103 would be as what Dr. Russell described, and that is the new regulations effective August 1st, 2024. So we need to delineate the difference between addressing discrimination, primarily Title IX sexual harassment. For any actions that occurred prior to August 1st, 2024. Including schools that are under the injunction currently. From the schools that are not under the injunction and any actions that occur after August 1st, 2024. So policy 103 addresses, again, if you look at page two, you'll start to see some of that language being embedded in this policy. Where it's differentiating between events or actions that occur before and after August 1st, 2024. Again, policy 103 would govern any actions that occurred before August 1st, 2024. And again, around Title IX sexual discrimination or sexual harassment. And anything that occurs after August 1st, 2024 would now fall under policy 103.2. So you'll see on page two, the second to last paragraph that highlighted area is where they're delineating the two different policies.
Is this going to change when the lawsuit goes away?
So if the-
Let me rephrase that. If the lawsuit goes away?
Yeah. So if the lawsuit goes away, there would have to be some additional changes. One of the things that would occur is policy 103.2, which we're recommending to adopt. That policy would not exist any longer. Because that policy references all the new regulations, including anything that occurs after August 1st, 2024. There would have to be adjustments made to policies 103 and 104. Anytime that we identify policy 103 to it, 103.2 in it would be removed. So the goal of these changes is to lessen the impact that we may have later on, depending on what happens with the regulations due to the current court cases. Another change in this policy is the language around emergency removals. Fox Rothschild felt strongly that we need to revise this language. And identify anything regarding emergency removals in attachments two and three. So you'll see where some of this information has been stricken. And there's also the inclusion of policy 103 or reference to policy 103.2 and attachment three. One of the other significant changes, you'll see any definitions related to Title IX sexual harassment are being removed from this policy. And are being included in policy 103.2, which deals specifically with Title IX sexual harassment. And then also attachment three. So policy 103 is in response to any discrimination and or harassment. So we have to remember that all discrimination and harassment fall under this policy. Anything that is Title IX or sexual harassment is basically being removed from this policy. And put into 103.2. In moving forward for August 1st, 2024.
And I know this question's been asked before, but who wrote 103.2?
So 103.2 was from Fox Rothschild. So utilizing PSBA's policy, felt that that policy fell short in certain areas. So Fox Rothschild provided policy 103.2. And AR 0 under 103.2. Any other questions or discussion around changes to policy 103? Okay. Policy 103.1 governs around non-discrimination for students who qualify with a disability. The only change to 103.1 is around the appeal process. And you can see that language in that policy. The appeal language, and this is in multiple documents that we're reviewing tonight. It's now sets parameters around when somebody can initiate an appeal. They have to provide specific information as to what they are appealing and why they're appealing. Whereas before it was left very general, where you can just indicate that you want to appeal the process or the decision. And then you would have to go through the appeal process. Here you now need to designate your reasoning behind the appeal. Any questions or comments for discussion? All right. If we move forward to 103.2, this is non-discrimination based on based on sex under Title IX. This is the new policy that Fox Rothschild is recommending that we adopt. This policy is based on the new regulations. And again, is put in place for any actions regarding Title IX sexual harassment or discrimination that occur August 1st, 2000, after August 1st, 2024. And also in schools that are not part of the injunction. So some of the changes that I just want to highlight in this policy that are based, I'm sorry.
Can you explain that again? This is for schools that are not part of the injunction or are part of the injunction?
103.2 would be for schools that are not listed in the injunction.
But we're listed in the injunction.
So two of our schools are not.
Correct.
So those two schools, if the action occurs after August 1st, 2024, would be governed by this policy.
But it doesn't say that anywhere in the policy that it's just for two schools, or does it? I didn't see that when I read it.
So in the other policies, so in policies 103 and 104, it references that any Title IX sexual harassment, anything that's designated as Title IX sexual harassment. That occurs after August 1st, 2024, or in schools that are not part of the injunction would go to 103.2.
Correct. But it doesn't list the schools that are in that are not in the injunction.
So those-
It's going to be on our website, but it's not there yet.
Correct.
So what happens if those schools get added to the injunction? Because they keep adding schools to the injunction.
Right. So if those schools get added to the injunction, then they would be added to our website. And then they would not be governed under 103.2. They would fall back to 103 or 104. I have a whole flow chart that we need to follow in regards to the dates of someone actions occur and whether the schools are part of injunctions or not. It does get complicated because of the injunction and the new regulations.
So. What do we do with floaters? They're like, we have people that go from one school to the next. They're there in the two different policies now for for these instances?
Are we talking about students or staff?
Both.
So if a student or a staff member are in a school that is not covered in the injunction. Then they, if the action occurs there, or they're a student or staff member of that school when it occurs, they would fall under 103.2.
What a mess. So is, once the injunctions are done, 103.2 would then remain as the policy for the school district? Or we're taking, we would then have to then look at this again?
If it's upheld.
If it's removed.
If the injunction is removed.
Correct.
And then no schools fall under the injunction.
Correct.
All schools then would be governed under 103.2.
I think we'd have to look at 103.1, though. We'd have to go back to 103 and make some revisions. We'd have to go, um, thank you. We'd have to go back to 103 and make some revisions in response to that change. Yes.
So it would roll up into a new 10, a revised 103 and 103.2 would become obsolete?
The Title IX. It would, it would, no, it would be, it would be in place for Title IX. Alleged Title IX violations.
Right. 103 and 104 would still remain for all discrimination and harassment that are not governed under Title IX.
That are not governed under Title IX. So I guess the question that I have with regards to the schools listed and the individuals that are in the listed schools. How are the power protections for those students and staff being upheld?
Can you state that again? Can you state that again?
So... I, I understand it in a very broad sense, right? So if the schools are listed in the injunction, they are not, they're being put on, on hold essentially from the adoption of the new Title IX regulations. Is that accurate?
From the new regulations, parts of the new regulations, correct.
Parts of the new regulation.
But they're still protected under the current Policy 103 and 104.
Got it, but there's an expansion of protections under the new regulations.
Correct.
So for the individuals in the schools, by circumstance, that are listed in the injunction, how are those students protected under the expanded rules?
So our current Policy 103 and 104 protects all classifications that are listed in the 103.2.
Okay.
The changes would be in more of the process, so-
Process that you need to follow for reporting?
For reporting, investigating, and determination.
And the severe versus pervasive.
Yeah.
Say that again?
Yeah.
The severity?
This, that is one of the biggest differences. So currently, under 103 and 104, or the previous regulations, in order to be considered or determined as sexual harassment, it had to be severe and pervasive.
Oh, I understand. Oh, that was that language piece of it.
Correct, in the new regulations, it's now severe or pervasive.
Okay, understood.
And just so you hear it, you know, in the first person, a lot of us do not believe that it's an expansion of protection. A lot of us believe it's exactly the opposite, that it's a diminution of protections for women's rights.
Noted, no, absolutely noted, and I guess, but of the, of the faction that does believe that it's an expansion, I guess my question was the devil's advocate of, well then, why aren't, how are they going to be afforded those rights if they're just by circumstance in a building that's listed on the injunction? That was the purpose of my question, but I understand that, I understand that those that filed for the injunction belong in those, are, they live in those buildings as well.
Yeah, and, but it's hard, it is hard to carve out a space in your mind where the world is governed by that lawsuit. The lawsuit applies and is holding everybody in this legal status.
Uh, this, yeah, understood.
Where nothing has changed until that lawsuit is concluded or just goes away.
So if I can, I'll just highlight several of the changes that you'll see in 103.2 compared to 103 or 104.
Can I just ask one other quick question?
Yes.
So policy meets once a month. Let's say we pass the policy, what's today? Today's October, so the policy comes up for first read in November, second, so the policy will enact itself in January. January- That would be second read. Yeah, so December 15th, maybe I got the wrong date. December 16th, one of those two schools gets added to the list. Do we have to meet the next day and revoke a policy, or no? Just adding it to our website? Like, I'm trying to figure out how quickly we need to act if another school gets added to the list or removed from the list. Is it just simply removing it or adding it from the Title IX website on our school website? That's it?
So my understanding, when you look at the footnote in our attachments, it does state, you know, Policy 103.2 shall only be followed at district schools where, and it goes on to say, you know, those schools where the injunction, where the schools are not included in injunction. So as soon as a school is included, based on our attachments, they would not fall under 103.2.
So we just have to add it to our website?
That would be my understanding, and I don't even think it needs to be added to the website.
Well, that's what the footnote says.
Correct, but as soon as they are listed-
Yeah.
-by the government as one of the schools as part of the injunction, they would not, they would no longer fall under 103.2. However, we will add them to the website as soon as we are provided notice.
Okay.
Good question. All right, just several changes to 103 that I felt were important to highlight. If you're looking at page one, the third, I'm sorry, 103.2. The third paragraph that begins with therefore. The end of the last sentence, even if some conduct occurred outside of the educational program or activity or outside the United States, that is new language in the new regulations where there are times where something may occur off premises that now fall under the protection of Title IX sexual harassment or sexual discrimination, as well as things that may occur outside of the United States. So that is new as compared to the former regulations.
Does that mean like a class trip that's overseas?
Yes.
I'm sorry, does that mean like a class trip that's overseas?
Yes.
Okay.
And then if you go down a little bit further, three more paragraphs, this policy applies to reports of discrimination. Again, just highlighting that there's a reference to when the alleged conduct occurred on or after August 1st, 2024. So that is highlighted throughout this policy. If we go to page two, definitions, another area that is new is confidential employees. These are individuals that we need to identify as a district and share those classifications with our staff as well as students and community. For individuals that a student or staff member may go to, discuss with them an incident that has occurred, but request that they keep the information confidential, as long as it is not of harm to the student or others, they are bound by the confidentiality guidelines for those positions, such as school psychologist, school counselor, school social worker, and school nurses. Those are the new areas that I wanted to highlight for 103.2. There is also an AR that would go with 103.2, and that, that AR does provide guidance as to the procedures we must follow when a report is made around sexual harassment. And one of the areas I just wanted to share with the committee is that our district is also identifying it will move to a single investigator decision-maker model, which allows the individual who conducts the investigation to also be the individual that makes the decision as to the outcome of that investigation. That's a similar model that's used to, used in other investigations. When we have something that occurs that might be against the student code of conduct or our student, or staff handbook or guidelines.
But we could only do that for five out of the seven schools, though, right?
Correct. Yeah, again, the schools that would be governed under 103.2. So only for two, excuse me, so only for two out of the seven schools. Any other questions or discussion around 103.2? Okay, 104 is the same as 103, except it governs sexual harassment, discrimination affecting staff or employees, and has the same changes as 103, again, which is more towards the appeal process. Any questions or discussion around 104?
Yeah, what is it? In the policy for definitions related to Title IX sexual harassment, it says and Attachment 3. Do we really want it to say that in a policy?
So because it's not an AR, it is indeed an attachment. It would be referenced in the policy, and then that attachment would also be made public. Are you referencing Attachment 3 for Policy 104?
Under definitions related to Title IX? Right there, and Attachment 3.
Yes, so the, the definitions for Title IX, if we can go back up to that section. So the definitions for Title IX sexual discrimination, sexual harassment are now either in Policy 103.2, because that policy only governs Title IX sexual harassment, or it's in Attachment 3. So Policy 103 and Policies 104 both have an Attachment 3 that strictly deals with sexual harassment.
But if you scroll down all the way to the bottom?
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't we, all the way, wouldn't we? Is Attachment 3 there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, it's not showing up in what I pulled up from the, from the meeting, okay. I just have- No, I have three things. I have 104, Policy 104, attached 2, and 10, oh, Attachment 3, okay. Policy 104, Attachment 3, okay. User error.
Yeah, so Attachments 2 and 3, the, the difference for those attachments would be Attachment 2 deals with discrimination and harassment that's non-Title IX.
Yeah.
Attachment 3 governs the process we must go through if it's determined to be Title IX sexual harassment. And that's both under Policies 103 and 104. Any other questions or comments for discussion? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, if we can move on to 234. 234 is pregnant parenting and married students, and we had a couple of questions last month during the policy committee meeting, wondering if this statement, the district shall not require documentation for establishing reasonable modifications around a situation where a student is pregnant, or is a parent, or is married. And we did, we did seek out advice from our solicitor, and the solicitor did advise we do not need to require documentation and to follow PSBA's recommendation. So it would remain as presented last month. If we can move on to Policy 824, maintaining professional adult-student boundaries. This is a new policy for the district, and if you recall, some years back, there was lots of conversation about this policy when it was introduced through PSBA in another PNN. And this is a policy Mr. Moran and I are inviting conversation around. We had a lot of conversation about it the last time. So a couple of things to maybe call out about 228, I'm sorry, 824, excuse me, 824. And they are discussion points at this point. But this policy really gets into considerations that our staff must make and the boundaries that they are expected to uphold between themselves and their students. And we haven't necessarily noted a lot of changes, but where I would suggest consideration, and this was a topic of conversation the last time, is under social interactions. This is food for thought for the committee. Under social interactions, the idea that students might sometimes be at teachers' homes raised questions in the past. And some of the language in the policy seemed limiting when sometimes teachers who live in the community have children the same age as students they may be working with, it's natural for them to sometimes be friends and for them to exchange or spend time at one another's houses. This had raised some questions in the past. How do you delineate between what's appropriate and maybe what's not so appropriate? And if you go down to numbers 10 and 11, what I would suggest the committee consider, inviting a student to the adult's home, the adult being the staff member, I would say without parent permission or consent. And I would suggest adding the same phrase to number 11. So that we make sure there's an awareness on the part of parents when students are friends with teachers' families or children of teachers and may spend time together.
How do you get that? So for instance, I, I'm a ninth-grade English teacher at the school. I have a kid who's in middle school who plays for, you know, a football program in the area or a baseball program in the area, and I'm going to have the team over after a game. I need to get parental consent from every team member's parent?
So I, I think some of this is probably based in some conversations and the ongoing interactions that happen. So if I have a son the same age as Mr. Cleland's sons, and they want to play together, the idea is that teachers need to make sure parents are aware. Full disclosure, right. Now, there isn't a signed document, but if, if there are questions that emerge, the expectation is that there are open lines of communication and awareness that parents are comfortable with the friendship, for example.
But this says it's, you're not allowed to invite students to an adult's home.
Unless without parent permission or consent, is what, is what I would suggest we add. You're right.
So, but there's best practice now, right? There's tons of teachers with kids in the district who have friends that are in the district. So what, what is the current best practice? Without it being in a policy?
You know, in, in my experience, there is open conversation. There are open lines of communication, and there are conversations, and individuals do not feel surprised. Now, a teacher may have a different perspective, but in my experience, there hasn't necessarily been a challenge raised around this because our teachers are professional, the relationships are strong. They tend to be strong between our community and our students, our staff and our students. So it's more positive than anything else. And there is, again, the communication so that there wouldn't be questions prompted. There's no sign on the dotted line and give your permission. However, there is, there is an expectation, there is a level of professionalism, and it tends to be upheld.
So I, I guess my concern-
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Along the lines of the language, considering this is a brand-new policy for the district, is the protection that teachers will have in upholding a policy in good faith when I, I don't know if that language is enough.
Yeah, I agree.
Look at, look at number two, or number three, giving personal gifts, cards, or letters to a student without written approval from the building principal. So I coach my PBYB team, and I buy everyone on my team one of these, this happens to be a Little League thingamabobber, but every year I got my kids whatever team we were that year. Well, if I taught here, do I need to get written approval from the building principal to buy the students this little gift to go on their hand?
Technically, yes, unless we revise that statement. You're right. So, so again, this is, this is a topic of conversation. It came out in the PNN, it generated a lot of conversation the last time. Very similar questions. So do we want to consider it as a committee with some of those considerations that I just offered about the relationships that we tend to see existing among staff and students? Or do we want to set the policy aside again?
I'd like to have teachers weigh in. I mean, there are principals that live in the school district.
Yeah.
I, I just think that the type of community that we have, there is not, it's not a black and white. I don't know how we can, can put forward a policy that the teachers haven't weighed in on with specific language that they feel would protect them.
We, we can certainly have a conversation with leadership.
Yeah, I just, I'm very, I just- I'm just concerned about unknowingly-
There's a lot on here that I don't even, I don't even think-
Listen, some of it's self-explanatory, right? Like, the, the romantic and sexual relationships piece is one thing, but-
We already have a policy for that, don't we?
Excuse me?
Don't we already have a policy for that? There, there's laws about that.
Right.
Right.
Exactly.
But it's in, it's all part of the same thing. The social interactions is where I have, take the most issue in not having. I understand that, I understand it in terms of protecting a student, but I, I just think that I don't, do you guys want to weigh in?
I mean, going to a student's home without legitimate educational reasons. I go to Wade's house because we're friends, he's a teacher, I'm a teacher, he's got a kid who's just-
Right.
But I'm going to have a beer to watch the Eagles game. That's not an educational reason, and his, his, his sixth-grade son happens to be running around the house. Like, that's, that's a problem. that's, that's a problem now?
Well, so I, I believe the intention, first of all, I think the intention is to protect both.
Right.
Our employees as well as students. And when, when I read the intentions of, you know, something as, as simple as number 3, right, that's giving a personal gift, card, or letter to a student. So it's not referencing, if I'm a teacher, second-grade teacher, and I want to purchase something for my entire class because it's a reward or an incentive, it's going to the entire class. That's very different than me as a teacher providing a gift to a single student or two students, where everybody in the class could have received that gift. So.
It doesn't say that, though.
Well, it says, "to a student without written approval from the building principal."
Yeah.
But in, but in practice, though, Ryan, like, I guess my thing is, like, okay, as a parent, I give Chris a holiday present to the team of teachers. Well, the teacher sends home a thank-you card.
Sure.
Only to that student, my student.
Oh, yeah.
Do they have to... I mean, that to me, if you're, if you're literally taking number 3 with just the words, that means that in order to write thank-you cards to a student directly between the teacher and the student, they would have to get building permission. That, to me, doesn't seem, that's not a feasible guideline. That's not... And, and the idea behind that guideline would be that maybe communication that would be inappropriate wouldn't be exchanged between a teacher and a student unbeknownst to the building principal or the parent, but do you see what I'm saying? It's like, the actual language of it is very, to me, very crippling.
Yeah. Well, and I think that's why it's important to, to have this discussion and solicit feedback and input as to, you know, what are some of those areas that are not intentional, right?
Yeah.
I think we don't want to.
Malfeasance, right.
Right. So, you know, but as I look at, you know, even 10 and 11, we talked about briefly, you know, inviting a student to the adult's home, again, I think language probably needs to be clarified here, but the intent of that, from my understanding, is that we are not inviting, as a teacher, I'm not inviting a student to my home, right? I'm not talking about my child's friend is coming over. We're talking about, as an employee, inviting a single student over to my home with nobody else's knowledge.
Can I play devil's advocate with you? If, if you have a son or adult, you have a child who happens to have another student of PV over the house, and you overhear a conversation as a mandated reporter, you still have to report that, right? If it was, you, you overheard a conversation that came up to be something that was concerning to you as a mandated reporter, you would still have to report that, right? Because there's a student in your school district.
Based on that information, I believe that's accurate.
So that, that person is not just a friend now. They're still, they're still a student, right? You can't, you can't differentiate. They can't be my son's friend at one moment and also still be a student the next. They're, they're, they're a student.
The context, the context changes.
It, it doesn't. They're still a student. And so if you're, normally I hear that policy is vague. If you have these types of, you're, I understand the onus of what you're trying to do. We don't want, you know, creepy guy who gives out Halloween candy inviting little kids into their house. Got that. That makes sense. But, that all being said, like, there are some things in here that if I were a teacher at Perkiumon Valley who has kids or participates in band activities or sporting activities or whatever activities, this would be really concerning on how I can continue to have those activities. It, it would be really, really concerning.
Okay, so I, I would want to be respectful of the agenda and time. I think we're all on the same page with the fact that there needs to be some work done here. If, we, we have about 15 minutes until 7 o'clock. Can we ask that this policy go to, I guess, the union reps and have them take a look and make some notes?
Yeah, I think I'll start with PVEA leadership.
Okay.
The team, and then, you know, we'll talk about it. And again, we may feel as if this goes overboard. Based on the comments, they're very similar to what emerged the last time the state PSBA recommended it, and, and I really appreciate the devil's advocate approach in some of the questions that are posed. So we'll bring it up to PVEA leadership, and it may be a policy that we just want to set aside because the expectations are covered through other policies or through the professionalism that's expected of our teachers, of our staff.
Or the law.
Or keep parts of it and cross-reference.
And the law, exactly. Educator misconduct, exactly.
Okay, wonderful. Are we okay to move on then? Does everybody agree with that strategy? Great.
Okay.
So then we're moving over to, hold on, let me, I'm on the wrong tab here.
So if we, if we just drop down, if I could, into the second half, these are the, the PNN's, the PNN policies from the September PNN. And again, you can see in the descriptors that a lot of it is just semantics and language adjustments or revisions based upon some updates to the laws. There was conversation about eligibility of non-resident students. We have to think carefully about disenrolling a student who becomes a non-resident and making sure we afford them adequate time to actually be able to transition away from the district into a new district. So we are, we are asked to, to afford them grace in those cases, and our district works really well with students in its efforts to do that. Now, the one, the one policy that we might want to look at, the others are pretty straightforward, is 607. It's an interesting policy. The district, in my experience, has never assessed a student tuition, never accepted or recruited or invited a non-resident to stay for tuition. However, we checked where we thought it might make sense to check. We've had this policy.
Is this in reference to the juvenile detention center now, where we could get tuition?
No.
So what, so what does it mean, then?
You know, I, I, I have that same question. Again, in my experience, we have never had a non-resident. Schools could recruit students for athletics if, if they actually enacted. So I don't have a good response for why and when this policy actually applies.
Can we remove it?
Jim, do you, Mr. Weaver, do you know by any chance?
I can tell you that in my 23 years, we've never had a student like this.
My guess is, is it's a punitive policy.
Punitive.
That we can charge students if they're found to be attending the wrong district, and it's a possible threat, that they can be assessed tuition.
Okay, so they sort of sneak by us. They're attending the district without our knowledge of them being a non-resident.
If they are, and they do not correct their conduct, then they can be assessed a tuition for attending the wrong district.
Okay.
I've also seen, you know, this type of policy be used when a district has a robust virtual academy, and you may have students who are looking to attend a virtual academy from a different district attend our district. So they, they can pay tuition and attend something like that. So I've seen this in place in other districts and, and for those reasons. And again, also, I think special education would be the other reason. If we have a program where a student from a different district may want to attend, sometimes you work into an agreement with another district, and then that student can attend our district but with a tuition cost.
I'd also add to that conversation. Typically, in this area, we don't have a lot of that, but in other parts of the state where you might have an issue that this has been on the books for.
So then maybe for those reasons, we maintain the policy, and we have it here if any of those situations would come our way.
I guess I, I'm personally in favor of, of holding it, only for the reason that, and it's been brought up in other conversation, that there are folks looking to move into the district to have access to, you know, services.
Get back, yeah.
Yeah. So if they are not a taxpayer, there should be some sort of a guideline in place that they would be able to have access in that.
Okay. Great. So as we look down to the bottom, under guidelines, you can see where administration has checked the boxes. PSBA sets up these choices. If you look at the very last one, when a student attends more than one week, two weeks, the sender will be charged for a full month of tuition. Is the committee comfortable with two weeks? Would you rather go to one week? What do you think is reasonable?
Wait a second. Maybe you do, what if it's, what's a local school district?
Worth Penn?
That's a little too far. Springfield Elementary School lost power for weeks. We dispensed their students throughout our school for a period of a month while they fixed the building, what have you. Can we reimburse? No, that's a bad example, too. I'm still trying to figure out how this would actually happen.
The, the most, the, the, the scenario that I was thinking of with regards to a student being, it would, that their, that the student's primary address is outside of our school district boundaries. So say, for example, they're legitimizing their enrollment at PV through maybe a grandparent's address. The grandparent lives in PV, but the parent doesn't live in PV, the, the student doesn't live in PV, but yet they want to take care, they want to be incorporated into the, the services of, say, for example, Skipback Elementary.
Yeah.
That, to me, would be a, a scenario. And I, I don't know that it's that far-fetched.
No, it happens a lot.
Right. So I guess then the question is, you know, from, from, from the financial side of things, what, what the recommendation, if this is the recommendation, then.
I would, I would recommend that we keep it. You just never know what's, what's going to happen and how things change, and they're cyclical, so let's just keep it on the books just in case. Again, we've never used it in my 23 years here, but you never know.
Tomorrow, Jim. You'll get the email tomorrow.
A reporting, a reporting of a, okay. All right, are we ready to move on?
Yes, okay.
Wonderful.
Excellent. Thank you for the feedback. All right, and then that pretty much concludes September's PNN.
Can we just look at 113?
Yep. 113 dot one?
Yeah. I just want to make sure. Do we consider vaping to be a tobacco product?
We have looked at that in previous policies.
Yeah, I know. I forgot. It says, yada, 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 possession, use, or sale of alcohol or tobacco products. So A, the Seinfeld reference of yada, 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 but B, it, do we need to add vaping? Because this was last looked at in 2019 before vaping was a thing.
Can you say, should it say something? What does it say in the other one?
I'm going to look. I'm trying to find it.
It say restricted, um... What did we say?
A month ago. I don't even know what I ate two days ago. Well, I, two days ago, I ate nothing.
Hold on.
Because we took out the Juul thing.
Right.
And we said vaping.
Well, we had to because.
Yeah, yeah.
They're suing the state, yeah.
Oh.
Infringement.
He said, um...
32nd. Here we go. Let's try this one. So this was.
Yeah, it is. Okay.
Policy 222. For purposes of this policy, tobacco product encompasses not only tobacco but also vaping products, including e-cigarettes, tobacco products, for purposes of this policy in accordance to the state law, shall be defined to include all the following, remember?
All right, so then we can cross-reference and pull that.
Policy 222.
So, thank you, Jim.
Wonderful.
113 point one. Let's see if it references.
It, it references 222.
Oh, good. Okay, all right.
But not, not on that, that subject, though. 222 is referenced on point 34, which is the report of the superintendent. So, yeah, that kind of just, I don't know. Right, right, right underneath referral to law enforcement for reporting incidences, we added products to the word tobacco. 222 is referenced in, actually, can we see right after 23? Can we just reference 34 in there?
That takes us to 222?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I'm okay with that, to make it clearer to the readers.
So then that would reference our definition of tobacco products.
Right, right. So that is first paragraph under referral to law enforcement.
Yeah. And I assume when we change things now, let's say, law enforcement agency, that just means the school police? Law enforcement agencies that have jurisdiction of the school's property, that would be our school police?
And the state police.
And the state police, yeah.
They're still involved or lower Frederick, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so usually the policies, once we review them, go up to PSBA, and they actually verify the citations. What we could also consider doing is being more explicit in the paragraph to copy the language from 222. We could do that in the text and share that at the board meeting for first reading, okay?
That would be my preference.
All right, so we can be more explicit.
Just so you don't, you have to hunt for it.
Right. Okay. Okay. Any other questions on September's PNN? Okay, helpful conversation.
Okay, moving on to Section 4. We only have the one in the local policy review. It's at 916 Volunteers. I just want to make sure that for the record, we captured the feedback around 916, the language they're in.
So what? This, this is a, this is a local policy that was raised because we had, in the child abuse policy that was part of the PNN, we had called out a particular type of volunteer that's obligated to participate in mandated reporter training. Otherwise, guest volunteers are not required to participate in mandated reporter. So we inserted, under guidelines, for example, program volunteers are obligated to participate, for example, in the child abuse policy mandated reporter training. So we're delineating between some of the types of volunteers. And because we did that in the child abuse policy last month, we wanted to be consistent in 916, which is really about volunteers, and make sure we had program volunteers called out where it was appropriate.
Yeah, this is what we talked about last time. But even guest volunteers have to go through that training?
They do not. Because they're never alone with students.
Are you sure? There's never an.
That's how we're defining them.
Well, you're defining that, but is that, is that a true statement, that in any extracurricular activity, there's never just a guest volunteer there by himself or herself because the other person's not able to make it? I don't know if that's accurate.
Never and always always create a problem, right?
Sure do.
So, um...
No, it's been two years by now. Two, it's almost three years.
So never and always are a problem, and I would, so what would you, what do you feel like the language would be to reflect the practice? As opposed to, don't tell me it never happens because it does.
Well, because that's an accurate statement.
No, understood, but how could we fix it, then? It's like a pin in it. You don't have to answer right now.
I know, I'm reading it. I'm just, I'm re... Why can't the guest volunteers go through the same training?
They could. They could. The district could mandate it. It doesn't right now. It's if I'm a guest reader in third grade, the teacher.
That's different.
Why? Why is that different?
Because.
That's a, that's a guest volunteer.
Sure, I understand that, but a guest reader, someone entering the school, there's, it's known that there's going to be, the teacher's going to be there, or a substitute's going to be there. Some, someone who works for the school district's going to be there. That's... That's guaranteed, that's not always the case with extracurricular activities, where you also have guest volunteers.
I don't, I'll let Mr. Moran speak to it.
Yeah, I guess we would need probably some examples as to how a guest volunteer is serving in extracurricular.
Just making it up, tennis, we have a tennis head coach, an assistant coach, and we have a guest volunteer, correct?
So coaching volunteers do go through the training?
Oh, okay, so they all go through.
They're considered program volunteers.
Ah, okay.
So the difference would be between, so sports.
Yeah, yeah.
Those volunteers go through, and they're actually more approved, they go through all the necessary requirements. Guest volunteer is going to be more of those individuals that are coming in for, like, a single event, it's gonna be supervised by staff, so they are not going through that type of mandated training process.
Want to talk?
Dr. Campley said she was gonna cite an example.
I can cite an example that Jason's speaking to. So when you're thinking about the field trips, and everybody breaks into groups.
Yes.
Your guest volunteer is your chaperone that takes four children, and they go off, and they're in Philadelphia, and they're looking at the museum, and they are alone with the children. Granted, there is a teacher maybe within 20, 30 feet, but they theoretically are alone with the children for a period of time. When they go to Washington DC, they have a meetup site. So those would be examples, but in the same purview, to be a mandated reporter, that is a pretty extensive training, and that is a pretty extensive responsibility to be putting on chaperones. So I don't know that I'm necessarily in favor, I just can think of an example that Jason came up with.
I guess I would only point out, in that example, and I'm thinking of other, maybe music department examples, where parents are volunteering, and they're one-on-one, alone with group of, groups of students, is that in order for that volunteerism to occur, there has to be child abuse clearances on file with the district. And I understand that those are two separate things, but it is, that is the mechanism for those types of volunteers, that you can't go on a field trip with the class unless you have your clearances on file.
Ms. White, if I may?
Yeah.
So, thank you for that example. That example would fall under program volunteer. So under that example, program volunteers would be required to go through the mandated reporter training. So if I am chaperoning a field trip, because that's a great example, you're going to be left alone with students, they are gonna be required to complete that training.
And I'm gonna say, I'm sure, and you're gonna say.
So my question, then, is how are you going to ensure that all of these parents are gonna have the time and opportunity to get that type of training before they can go on? I mean, I think at that point, when you think of equity and making sure that all parents have an opportunity to be able to volunteer, to be on field trips, you're really narrowing the scope of, of who's going to be able to volunteer. And I don't really think that's fair to all the parents who wanna be able to have an opportunity. I mean, when we think mandated reporting, we don't think about parents as mandated reporters. We think about the professionals as being mandated reporters. Maybe there's just a pamphlet or something that we hand out to parents before they become a volunteer that says, hey, if you hear of X, Y, and Z, you should talk to the teacher in charge, and not put that onus and that responsibility on the parents. They're not the professionals, they haven't, I don't, I think we're kind of putting our toes in the water of something we don't wanna get into. There's, I, that's just my opinion, I'm not technically on this committee, so I'll just be quiet.
Well, I have another question. We currently, this is a current, this is an active policy, this isn't new, so what do we do now with someone who wants to go on a field trip? They go through the mandated reporter training?
They do not. And that's where the discrepancy came in with the child abuse policy versus the volunteer policy.
How long's the training?
Three hours.
It's a video?
No, it's a webinar.
It's a webinar, yeah, but it's not a live webinar, it's a video.
Correct, you can watch it at, at your time permits.
And like I learned from someone that lives in my house, you could also watch it at 1.5 speed.
You can't do that.
They, oh, they don't let you do that?
Not for that training.
Ah, no, you gotta respond, okay. Can you do it in parts?
Yes.
Okay.
I think to me, it's not that I think that the information is not valuable in the mandated reporter training, it's just that I think that, again, the onus is, is one piece, and then also keeping track of who and who hasn't, like, who would that fall to? The building principal? So you're gonna have Ryan look, I'm not, not you, not you, not you.
The board is going to, yeah.
No, no, I'm saying, like, but you, society, is gonna have, the district is gonna have Ryan follow up on cataloging every single child abuse cleared volunteer in the district to make sure that they've had that training.
So we currently, meaning we, HR department currently monitors that now, except for the mandated reporter training.
But that's the piece that I'm talking about.
Right, so right now, we, we monitor all clearances for volunteers, to ensure that program volunteers have their appropriate clearances. This would just be one more added piece to that.
Is it a queue system?
I'm sorry?
Is it a queue system? Like, for, for Little League, we send out our 300, you know, clearances, and it's literally a, a queue, and it, you only get the people that, here are the people that haven't completed that can't coach, so it's a, if their name's not on the list, it means they completed it. You could change the Dropbox to who hasn't, who, who has, and you have this big list, but it's basically a queue that just alerts you, hey, we're getting close to assigning, you know, this field trip, these people are not completed.
I think the fast answer is yes, because I've had someone reach out to me directly from a building saying that, hey, they're about to expire, we need to redo them, so. All right, I want to make sure that we move on, we're at 7:06.
Well, what are we doing with this?
Okay, excuse me?
What are we doing with this?
We can put this, we can table this for the policy meeting and move it into those, a governance section. I'd like to start the board meeting on time, though. Well, we're already five minutes late. So that, that's what I would like to do, if everybody's amenable to that. So we don't have to stop the conversation on this, we can just hit pause, if that's okay. Is everyone okay with that? Okay. So what we will do, then, at this point, we will bring back the local policy review for conversation in governance section, if that's acceptable, and then we will move with closing items. The policy committee meeting notes will be provided following the meeting. We have meeting dates, our meeting for November is on November 11th, prior to the board meeting, and we have 5.03 notice of video disclaimer, and then with that, I adjourn policy. We will take a three-minute, three-to-five-minute reset, and we will come back to resume with our board meeting. Thank you. All right, so slight delay, but I appreciate the grace. We are going to call the meeting to order, roll call, Ms. Widener.
Dr. Campley?
Mr. Fountain?
Here.
Mr. Keenan?
Here.
Mr. Liggett?
Here.
Mr. McKinney?
Here.
Dr. Sadler?
Here.
Mr. Saylor?
Present.
Dr. Weston?
Here.
Ms. White? Here. That, 103, 104, pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Mitchell, would you grace us with the reading of the mission statement?
I certainly will. The mission of the Perkyarmun Valley School District is to cultivate an inclusive community of learners empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally.
Wonderful. 1.06, it's the approval of the agenda as presented.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. 1.07, approval of the amendments. Can I have a motion to approve the amendments for the September 9th meeting and the October 7th meeting?
So move.
There are motion, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. 1.08 was our recognition from last week. 1.09, comments on any topic. I would open the floor at this time for the public to make comments on any topic, there afforded three minutes. State name and municipality. Unfortunately, we have no guests this evening, so we will move on to section two, which is reports and presentations, student liaisons report, Mr. Lees.
Hello, good to see everybody again. The fall sports season is wrapping up, as tomorrow, the girls soccer team will be competing in the PAC semifinals at OJR, and the cross-country teams will also compete in PACs at Mand Rock Park. We'd also like to congratulate both the boys' and girls' water polo teams, who had impressive wins over Hazelton on senior night, and to the football team, who also had a win over Norristown last week, to increase our record to 6-2 overall.
Thank you, Mr. Lees. 2.02, president's report, I just will take a moment to just say that we had a lovely hosting of, a presentation of the atsomeage table this morning. Am I saying that correctly? Atsomeage table this morning, it was wonderful, it was student-led, and it was very, very impressive. So we want to extend our, our thanks to the students and Dr. Fitz, and also to the foundation, of course, for partnering with the student ambassadors to really bring that to the finish line. It was wonderful. And then I will also just point out, the marching band had their home show yesterday, it was very well-attended, there were six competing bands hosted, and it was a wonderful event. Little windy, but a lovely event. So I will then move on to 2.03, which is Dr. Russell's report.
I have nothing additional from last week, thank you.
Wonderful solicitors' report, 2.04.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Fantastic, board and district committee reports, 2.05. Does anyone have anything to add with regards to update to any board or district committee? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to section three, the consent agenda. May I have a motion? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Hold on one second, I apologize. Do we need to make a motion? I apologize. Do we need to, do we need to amend the agenda to finish the policy meeting, or no?
So, I did finish the policy meeting, but what we did was, we held off on the completion of the discussion with regard to the policy 916. So, do we need a motion to have a continuance of discussion?
Or should we just do it here in committee reports?
You don't need a motion, that's fine. Thank you.
So, I will then go back and ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
There's a motion, is there a second? Motion in a second, are there any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Consent agenda passes. And now, I scrolled down too far, hold on one second. Motion passes. Section 4, education, Mr. McKinney.
Thank you, Ms. White. Mr. Mitchell, any updates for education?
Thank you, Ms. White. Mr. Mitchell, any updates on education?
There are no updates to the report.
Okay. 4.02, 4.03, 4.04, 4.05, 4.06 are all on consent, and 4.07 was the enrollment report. That concludes my section.
Thank you, Mr. McKinney. Section 5, business, Mr. Saylor.
Finance committee, the whole report was given last Monday, and so was the report on grant donations, the rest of the sections on consent.
Wonderful. Mr. Saylor, thank you so much. Mr. Liggett, payment of bills, Section 6.
6.01, I'm looking for a motion, I will move to ratify the bills and payroll as presented.
Second.
The motion is there a sec, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
And then I will make a motion to accept the treasurer's report and the financial statements.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor? Against? Motion passes.
That ends my section.
Thank you, Mr. Liggett. Mr. Fountain, professional personnel, Section 7.
Okay, all of Section 7 is on consent, so that ends my section.
Thank you, Mr. Fountain. Dr. Weston, Section 8, support personnel.
Items 8.01 through 8.08 are all on consent, and that concludes Section 8.
Thank you, Dr. Weston. Mr. Keenan, Section 9, governance.
So, Section 9, governance, let's just have 9.01, we have a first reading on policies, any comments on those policies? And then 9.02 is on consent, and then, under Section 9, governance, we were going to finish a discussion on, was it policy 916?
116.
916, yep. So, where we left off with regards to policy, we were having conversation around mandated reporter training for those individuals that volunteer through the school district without pay. So, do you want to pick that conversation up, Mr. Saylor?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the current wording that it has to do that. I think we should really kind of define what is, what's volunteer versus, let me pull up 916.
So, program versus guest?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so more clearly define the delineation between the two?
Yeah.
And I think the question that emerged from the conversation was whether or not chaperones, which right now fall under program volunteers, should move through mandated reporter training.
I just think the way we are in society can never be too careful, and then if you're going to have an opportunity for someone to be alone with students without a school district employee, they should go through that training, even though that training is potentially three hours long. There could always be a situation that pops up when you're alone with a student where that training is going to be considered helpful.
Dr. Campley?
I mean, I see the point of having, you know, extra precautions, I do just think that it's a little tricky. It's one thing to ask the families to have their clearances, because we're making sure that they're safe coming in to take care of the students when they're chaperoning. But, it's another thing to give them the responsibility of being mandated reporters. I don't know that a three-hour training for somebody who's coming in, I don't know, I just think sometimes that it's the power that goes with that. I could see some parents taking it a little too far, calling unnecessarily, like I just think it's opening Pandora's box in some ways. I don't know, I just think it, I don't know that we need to give everybody the mandated reporter training. I personally think it's almost like taking that chaperone piece to a whole nother level that doesn't need to be taken. I mean, we have parents that come in to chaperone to go to the zoo, or to go to the farm for, you know, a couple hours. Do all of those people who chaperon one time need a three-hour training to be mandated reporters? That is, this is not something to be taken lightly. A mandated reporter is a very serious thing. It's a very big responsibility. It's not something that somebody just takes and takes, watches a video for three hours, and all of a sudden, they've been vested with the power to listen to a student open up about pretty, very serious things that have happened to them, and now they can go and make a call. I don't, I just, I think, I think there should be, if this has been said to you, you need to go talk to the professional employee who then can, who knows what to do with the information, who's been trained in it beyond a three-hour training.
But that's what the training does, though.
A three-hour training is nothing compared to what our educators are actually trained in.
These aren't educators, and the training, the training is there to let, the training is there so a volunteer.
But we're not talking about someone who's.
Excuse me, Tammy. Dr. Campley, let Mr. Saylor finish.
The training's there for someone who's not in education, the training doesn't tell them how to handle that conversation. The training doesn't say, okay, student X has said that, you know, they're getting, you know, my mom left, my dad's drunk and he beats me at night. The training's not for there to teach the parent, the volunteer, how to have that cognitive conversation with the student. It's more to let the volunteer know, what are the steps that they need to take to bring that child into a safe space, right? And I would hate the fact that, even if it's to the zoo, or to the aquarium, whatever it is, there could be two minutes of that child's life, that if they're around an adult that isn't properly vetted and trained and knows how to handle that situation, for three hours, it's well worth the time.
I still think that if, like a coach, that's one thing, they're seeing that student over and over again, but a person who's coming in one time, I don't necessarily think that that is inappropriate. I think it's a really big responsibility to do, when there are teachers there that the person, we could give them a flyer on, if somebody says X, Y, and Z, you need to come to me, versus a three-hour training.
Dr. Campley, I guess, I think that your lens is, I understand where you're coming from with your lens because of what your professional acumen is. I think, though, with regards to Mr. Saylor's points, the issue that I personally have always had with, for example, FBI clearances being the gateway to allowing for volunteerism, the only thing that FBI clearance proves, as you know, is that there's been no offense reported against that individual. It has nothing to do with whether or not that individual is actually safe to be around children. So, I feel as though the three-hour training, although I understand your point about it being a burden, to me, information with regards to the signs to look out for in terms of passing off and raising a flag in advocacy is valuable, and I think that pairing it with maybe an attestation statement, you know, if you are, this is what's required and expected of you, you're holding, you do hold some responsibility for the children in your care as a volunteer, and I think that some of that's common sense without the training, but not every parent has the same level of advocacy or awareness with trauma-based interactions. And I think that as a, I think that if you've experienced trauma, and you're with children that maybe need advocacy, you're aware of it, but if you're not, I think that the training is worthwhile, it's worth the time.
Yeah, I mean.
I can see that point. I just, I also can see, and I've seen where sometimes you have some parents who, the minute they have that training, they will take that upon themselves to.
But that's not a reason to not inform the masses, in my view.
Yeah, I just, I think, I think there's, I personally think it's a lot, I think we're taking it one more extra step that I don't even know that we need to, but it's my personal opinion.
Mr. Fountain?
Yeah, I think that, in all honesty, I think that those that you're talking about that would be more inclined to call if they have had the training, might also be the ones that would be inclined to call whether they had it or not. So, I think that this, I would say, is being something that is just another layer of security, not only for the students, but also for the chaperones.
Are there other thoughts around the table? All right, so with regards to an action plan for this particular policy, Dr. Russell, the takeaway would be what, in your view?
The takeaway is, we're going to more clearly delineate the difference between a program volunteer and a guest volunteer, and I support the recommendation to have anyone who has direct supervision of students in an alone setting to have the mandated reporter training, and I think we'll clarify that as part of the definition or the language that appears in the policy.
Okay, so with regards to tracking and documentation, how does the board and administration feel about some sort of an attestation statement acknowledging the training and contents and the responsibility? Because I think there's a difference between taking the training, yes, here's my certificate, and actually what that volunteer's responsibility is.
There's, when you take that training, there's cues that pop up, so.
I took it today.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, listen, I got, I understand that, but with regards to the ownership of the volunteer's position, to satisfy what Dr. Campley points out, I do think that is, regardless of whether or not you've taken the training as a parent, if I see something, I'll say something, but I'm still going to say something to the professional in charge of that child.
I'm good with the policy. If the school wants to create an AR that has secondary natures, that's up to them.
And that's the reason I bring it up.
That's up to the school.
So, at this point, we do not do that. Mr. Moran's going to speak.
So, we do, excuse me, we do currently have a volunteer checklist acknowledgement form, so in our handbook, the, if you want to volunteer, you do go through that, and you check off and sign that you've met these requirements, so we can add some information about the mandated reporter training to that current form that we already use.
Dr. Russell, on what you had read a while ago, of what you wanted to update, the only thing that I would suggest as an addition to that is, instead of those that will be in charge by themselves, put in, potentially be in charge, because with the example that was given, that may or may not occur, but if it does, it does.
Yes, good point, thank you.
Different scenarios for different purposes. I appreciate the discussion and also allowing it to occur with the whole board, I think that the points raised were really valuable. Are there any other points that would like to be made with regards to 619, 916? I'm dyslexic. 916. Okay, no others?
That ends my section.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Go ahead, Dr. Russell. Okay, so Section 10 at 7:34, we will open the floor for comments from the audience. Anyone? 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 Okay. So, Section 10.02, comments from board members. I will open the floor to board members that have comment. Dr. Russell has something to say. Dr. Russell?
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to introduce the board to an updated manner in which Ms. Widener and I had talked about approaching Education Committee of the whole, so that nobody is surprised Thursday, and I just wanted to get the board's feedback on this. So, Ms. Widener has organized the meeting to be very similar to a board meeting. Mr. Mitchell is requesting action on several items. So, if you go into Board Docs and you look at the Education Committee of the whole meeting... It's, is it a draft?
No, it's a draft, you can access it.
Yeah, I'm not logged into Board Docs, but when you go in and you look at the agenda, you will see, it's set up very similar to a board meeting, and. Right, it's up, but it's only in draft, so we can post it tomorrow, yeah. And then you will see the requests for action, but again, it's more like a board meeting, because it's a committee of the whole, so if there's a quorum present, the board could take action.
So, to that point, Dr. Russell?
Yes.
I want to make sure that, for example, last month was the first month of education of the whole, we did not have a quorum.
We did not.
And so, I have some concern around that in allowing for there to be business done in that section that is of time-sensitive nature, so I would like to have attendance, if you're planning to not attend, I would like for there to be some sort of a.
So, so when we talked about making this a committee of the whole, I thought it was understood that we wouldn't be taking action. So, for instance, I'm on another board that meets that same time, and that's been that meeting.
Conflict, yeah.
Correct, but I was never under, I thought it was going to be a committee, but not an, let me rephrase this, not a meeting where votes would be have.
And not to fill in any blanks or try to explain anything, just my memory was that it's sort of ad hoc, we would do it as a board meeting so that we could all attend and participate.
Correct.
And there would, and our, and my understanding was just, we, hopefully we won't need to take any action, but that we wouldn't plan to take any action. I mean, if we need to take action at some public meeting, you know, I'll make special effort to be there always, if I'm needed to be there, but that was just my understanding of how, how we would, how we would hold the meeting. I didn't, and I don't know, I mean, we can all discuss it, because we're all, I mean, I guess, sort of being, being asked, I guess, and not that I can be there, but we're all, are we all being asked to be there, every education committee? I'm just trying to understand, too, what's going on.
So, I think it's twofold. So, I bring up the point about attendance not to create a mandatory additional meeting. I brought it up just out of, it was sort of an adjunct comment, that I think with regards to committees in general, I think it's just professional courtesy to say whether or not you can or cannot make something if you're, if you happen to be on it, so someone else can fill in. It's always been the, kind of, the way that we've approached committees, you know, if I can't show up to policy, I ask for a stand-in type of thing.
Correct, but this is on a, this is on a third night, though.
Understood, understood that, and that's why I think with regards to taking action, I would have to agree that is not how the Education Committee of the whole was intended. I think the action would always have been part of the education section of a standing board meeting, but understanding tonight that there was some action items, they would have been presented for approval this evening prior to having discussion in Education Committee. So, sometimes timing, I think.
That's okay, I mean, really, which is why I wanted to bring.
Well, I'm confused still, wait.
Okay.
They wouldn't be presented today, they would have been presented last week, and a whole entire week would have gone by.
Right.
In the education section, understood.
That's right, that's right.
You're saying on Thursday, you want to vote on something that's going to be presented on Thursday?
I don't want to necessarily, I'm just presenting a possible format, because it is an Education Committee of the whole. Last month, if there had been a quorum, there was a conversation about taking action on PSATs, for example, but I think this is a new approach for the board, so it's important that nobody is surprised Thursday, and because it is a committee of the whole, you do have the opportunity to take action if you so choose, but again, if that's not the preference of the board, if that's not the will of the board, that's okay.
Wait, that's not, that's not an accurate statement.
What isn't?
Because it's a public meeting.
Public meeting.
That it, there's ability to take action.
No, it would need to be presented.
It would have to be on the agenda before action.
Enough on the agenda in advance, that there's a motion.
Right, which is how Ms. Widener has drafted it, based upon that possibility. Again, why I'm bringing it up.
I'm reconfused. It's either going to be posted to the public that the board will be voting on Thursday... It's either going to be posted to the public, that the board will be voting on Thursday, or it's not, it's not a possibility. Are we gonna be voting on Thursday or not?
So, that's, so that's, as of right now, the answer is no, we are not voting on anything on Thursday.
Okay.
What Dr. Russell has brought up in the Board Comment section is the proposition that should the agenda for the education meeting on Thursday, it needs to be posted two days prior, correct?
24 hours.
Okay, 24 hours prior. Today's Monday, it would be posted... Just like the policy agenda is posted. Before the policy meeting?
No, this is different. You're asking the board to potentially vote on Thursday with no notice, even the 24 hours notice. Normally, what happens is, there's a whole entire, there's 13 days. The board gets an agenda on Friday, the board has 72 hours to read the entire agenda, look at all the PowerPoint slides, at least I do, and read everything, right? And then, vote on it. In policy, I get the policy agenda on Thursday, I think Wednesday, Thursday. I read all the policies, all the P&amp;Ns. We've now reduced policy to 59 minutes, which is different, because policy meetings used to last three hours, right? We've condensed that. Now, we might have a meeting on Thursday where we're gonna be presented something on Thursday to vote on Thursday. That's totally different. That's different than any meeting we have.
It is. As an Education Committee of the Whole, again, why I'm bringing it up is that it is a possibility. That's why I brought it up for conversation. If it's the will of the board not to take action when the Committee of the Whole meets, that's okay, but you could also take action if you would so choose. It's a public meeting, it's a committee of the whole, so it's a possibility. So, administration wanted to bring that up as a conversation. Last month, that was actually discussed as part of Education Committee of the Whole. It may not be the will of the board, that's okay.
So, why wasn't it presented last week?
Okay, that can be rhetorical.
No, no, why wasn't it presented last week in education, that, hey, we're thinking about doing this?
You know what, that's on me, Mr. Saylor. I, I wasn't ready with this piece for that, that, that's why it wasn't presented. So, you're right, that would have been helpful, to have a little more time to think about it, and that wasn't the intent of administration. It was really just to afford the board, again, as we head down a different path with Education Committee again, this is just an opportunity, not necessarily pushing one way or the other.
I get it, but the onus of moving it from the Committee of the Whole, which is what it always was...
No, it wasn't. It was not always a Committee of the Whole.
Last year was Committee of the Whole. It was, the education happened during the board meeting. It was a Committee of the Whole.
Correct, last year, that's right.
Last year, correct. And at that time, things would be presented on Monday.
Right.
They would go into the, and a whole entire week would go by, right? Which is a little bit different than what we're talking about moving forward to, which is a, a one-day thing. The, we changed it, the onus of changing it from the Committee of the Whole was to allow the community an opportunity to come out on a dedicated time to listen to, listen to reports. It was never about potentially adding a third board meeting. Because in, because in, in that case, then, other things could be added to the agenda outside of education.
I think the purpose was twofold. I think the purpose was to afford the community an opportunity outside of a work session, where there's a lot to talk about often, and also to afford all board members hearing the education information, because that became important last year, which was why the Education Committee of the Whole moved into the work session. So, it was really twofold. But you're right, it does not give the board a lot of lead time, and I know that's important to the board, so we don't have to do that. It, it, again, it's an option, it's an opportunity.
So, Dr. Campley, give us one second for my, before I lose it. So, the intention 100% was just as Doc, when we had discussed setting up committees for this year, this school year, the reason that I was in favor of pulling the agenda, the Education of the Whole content to a separate evening and creating the Committee of a Whole on a separate night, ad hoc, should you like to join us, we could. It was, it was not my intention to create a third meeting or create it and have it be a voting meeting. I would say, from a perception standpoint, based on Dr. Russell explaining that this is how the agenda is, is being built with Mr. Mitchell now, he was not in place last year at any point, obviously, there is some, in my mind, there's some, not leeway, is not the right word, some, like, a lag time in terms of putting a new system in place versus the old system, because we only had the first Education Committee of the Whole on a different night once so far this year. And during that meeting, I, I think in my mind, there would have been a quorum, but it was attended like at every other meeting. And the reasons are irrelevant, because you can choose to come or not choose to come. My comment about attendance is purely out of professional courtesy to, to every other board member, and, and so, that, that's kind of my perspective on committees in general. It would be my thought, however, to have it be, for example, like Safety and Operations, its own standalone committee, recommendations from the committee come to the board meeting and then are voted on. And I, and I think that that is really the way that you would envision the process happening, or that it should happen. Is that what you're in favor of?
No, I was in favor of leaving it like we had it last year, but in the new theory, yes.
In light of, in light of the change.
Yeah, correct. It would just, it would operate just like Safety and Ops.
Okay. Dr. Campley?
So, my, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. I could see it as, as working as Safety and Ops, but I'm thinking, on the off chance something comes up in your, in our monthly Education Committee of the Whole committee meeting, say you mentioned the PSATs. That was the first meeting, but a lot of times, these meetings build on one another. If something's building and it gets to a finish point, and there's some sort of time crunch, like, we need to make an answer on something, I could see there may be a situation where you're like, instead of waiting another entire month, I could see where maybe you would need to say, I, we'll put it on the agenda so that we can get a vote, because we need to say yes to whatever.
We have policy for that, though. Five board members can require a meeting, or a board president can call an emergency meeting.
If something is of such a crucial nature. But I think that was my point, Dr. Campley, in, in there being like this little, this lag, squishy period, because normally, we've, you know, it's almost like an escrow type of thing, you know?
Right.
We, there's enough time for Jim to build that into his finance agenda for the following month when Safety and Ops is said, so we only had the one...
Right, we only had one meetings, but I could see how there may be an oppo, this, when you're building, there could be an opportunity, this just allows it, if there is a quorum. Legally speaking, it is a cha, there is a chance. However, it sounds like, while we know there's a chance, the actuality of it coming into occurrence, it doesn't sound like it would be happening very frequently. Well, and I think what's more important to me is that it does not appear to be something the board's comfortable with, which, again, administration also appreciates. You like time to be aware of things, to be able to ask questions, to think about things. There wouldn't be the lead time that Mr. Saylor is referencing in this case. So, a Committee of the Whole affords the board that advantage, if it wants it. It can take action if it has a quorum. The community can also come out, it does not extend the work session, in our experience, another hour and a half. We don't have to do it that way, though, which is why I wanted to bring it up tonight and not surprise anybody Thursday with that. We won't set the agenda up if that's, if that's what we prefer, that's okay.
Right, you set the agenda up, but you don't put, I mean...
No, no action, no approval, exactly, yeah. Just like the traditional agendas, yeah. If that's the will of the board, that's fine.
I mean, we, I understand what a public meeting is. It is a public meeting, you know? I mean, I'm not avoiding that, but, anyway, but I, yeah, I think we, that's the understanding that we had previously, and, and if, you know, the board is needed somewhere, just ask us to be there, and we'll be there.
And I don't know that there's anything on here that couldn't wait until November, so... They were.
So, so with that example, for, for example, what could have happened is that could have been brought to the meeting last, last week. It could have been on the agenda for this month, and we could have, as a board, collectively taken a vote on that.
What's the PSAT issue?
Whether or not we should, not PSATs, it's the...
PSATs just happened.
It was, it was, it was admin, it was the idea that we would administer PSATs to every 10th grader, and the district would pay for that.
What do we do now?
Students pay, and it's by choice.
Well, I just, my son just took it, I have no idea.
You paid.
And then, we had this, we parlayed the conversation into AP tests as well.
Right.
So, it was a twofold.
And there was, right, conversation about what the district used to traditionally do was pay for the AP test for students, because it wanted students to participate and take the test. Now, that the district does not pay for AP tests, students are still expected to take the test, but they're not obligated to take it if they prefer not to.
And the financial burden is significant for students that take more than one AP, more than one AP class.
So, so again, that idea, you know, as Mr. Keenan said, we've sort of gone round and round with it, and, and I don't have to repeat myself. Honestly, administration wants to respect the will of the board. That's what we want to do.
Okay, so, thank you for bringing...
Yeah, that's another 15 minutes, we'll never get back.
Thank God there was no public comment this week. Jeez. So, I guess the takeaway, then, is that going forward, after the Education of the Committee of the Whole, which will happen at 7:00 PM on the 17th, right after Wellness, which is at 6:00, whatever the takeaways are from that committee meeting will appear during the Education section in November.
Correct, so it's business as usual, business as we know it.
And we appreciate.
And we all understand that language, right? Yeah, and I think it's clear to me, that's what we're most comfortable with, and that's important for us to know. So, yes.
Do any other board members have any comments or questions? Anything to add?
I would add to what you had said a while ago, that me, or the introduction to the table this morning was amazing. I was, I was having a blast just trying to play with that thing a little bit, so it is probably one of the most amazing tools.
Futuristic, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was amazing, so, and I thoroughly enjoyed it, so...
The students were wonderful, really, really wonderful, so they should be commended for all of their efforts. Anyone have anything else? Mr. Weaver?
I'm good.
You're sure? All right. Well, with that, notice of video recording disclaimer, 10.03, 10.04 adjournment. See everyone, hopefully, at least on the video, on Thursday. Thank you so much.